Next, please.
Discussion items, 2018, 2019, second budget revision and 2019, 2020 budget.
Our most favorite topic.
Yes, and I think I have the rest of the meeting for today.
Yeah, the rest is yours.
And we usually go to 10 o'clock, so I got plenty of time.
You do know that we have a tradition for our summer meetings that we try to break every year.
All right, hour and a half then. No, I appreciate the time with the board again on the budget as it's a very important aspect. And unfortunately, it's been a very difficult year at the state level of actually knowing where the budget's going to be this year. It's very behind. I'm sure that's because of all the new legislators and the governor this year that they have to get together and start working together differently that they have in the past. So we've always been getting a budget prior to June 1st in the past for the last seven, eight years. So this is the first year that we're going beyond that. So if you're a new board member, this is something that we've experienced before in the past quite a bit. So it'll be something that we'll have to watch going forward. So a lot of the budget today is based on estimates because we don't have firm numbers. And they're saying that it could be late as July, August, September, before we actually know what our final numbers are. So we're going to be basing the budget on estimations at this point. There's a lot of data behind it of how we got to the estimates. They're not just numbers picked out of the air. There's a lot of data that goes behind it, and we'll go from there. So again, the Dearborn Public Schools, as the athletic leaders mentioned, is a great place to work. People are very collaborative. They work hard. And so just to give you a little outline of the district by the numbers, Dr. Blakel and myself presented our budget process at the MSBL conference this year, and it was well-attended and people really enjoyed it that we're actually going to be doing at the national conference come this fall. So, and this is one of the slides that we presented just to kind of give you an outline of what our district is made of. It's the third largest district, largest district in Michigan, and we have a lot of dynamics going on in our district. So I don't need to go through all the numbers as you're very familiar with them since you live with it every day. So again, I like this screen very much because this gives a pictorial of how our funding is done. State law requires us to have all these special funds, and as you can see, we're starting from the right. We have our capital project fund. That's where a lot of our infrastructure repairs and replacements are. Our debt funds, as we've done past bond issues, as we raise taxes to pay back those bonds, they have to be in their own separate fund. If a fund has its own revenue source, like grant funding, food service, they have to be in their own special fund. And anything that falls in those other three categories falls into our general fund, which is our main operating fund. And that's where probably 75, 80% of our money is sitting in there to deal with on an annual basis. And this presentation will be basically around the general fund. So as we go throughout the year, a lot of things happen, so we have to continuously adjust the budget. We adjusted the budget back in February for the first time on an annual basis, and again, again, at the end of the year, as we also project going next year. And so we build our budget model on the First Amendment as we go through, look for the end of the year and for next year. So a lot of that information will change as we go along. We have a lot of staff that go on leaves for whatever reason. People retire or resign early, so there's always a lot of adjustments made to the staffing. The state constantly monitors our funding and modifies that, so those are changes. And even our student population, they come and go. And so there's a lot of edits that we count twice a year, once in the fall, once in the winter. And in between, they come, they go, and there's always audits that they're always going back and adjusting a point FTE here or there. So it's constantly changing. And as you see, there's a lot of adjustments that happen during the year. So looking at the three items that are the biggest for revenue and the expense size, taxes, that makes up a large portion of our taxes. We levy the 18 mills on non-Homestead property and 6.17 on Homestead properties. And so that's a big aspect. Taxes went up 3.8% this year. Our foundation allowance, we're being very conservative for next year, looking at $65. That's the basic money available in the state aid fund this year without any additional revenue sources or transfers in from another source. So we're being conservative on that. And our student counts, they've decreased in 1819, and they're projected to increase again in 1920. So those numbers are adjusted. On the staffing side, we have our staffing is increasing 2% per our union contracts, and we have a younger workforce as people retire, new ones come in, and they're allowed steps as we go along. So that's an increasing cost. Our structural program remains strong, as Dr. Blakel has shared many times, our items on our benefits for our instructional program. And infrastructure, that's been something we've been talking about for the last year. We're maintaining it, but we need a lot of replacing to happen, and that's going to be a focus also going forward. And please stop me if you have any questions, otherwise you're going to...
I've got a question for you.
Yes?
You mentioned staffing increasing 2% with the younger workforce. I would think it would go the opposite way, that the newer teachers would be at a lower salary than the teachers retiring.
Yes, but however, the younger staff also have steps. So if you're at the top step, you're not getting a step every year. So therefore, that cost stays flat except for the cost of living adjustment of the 2%. So we do represent some savings that first year as they start in a lower price, but every year after that, we have to increase the cost model. Not the overall cost might be the same, but the actual increasing every year we have to account for. So this is our tax base. As you can see, it's going up 3.8%. It talks about our 6.17 mills that we do on Homestead properties since we're a hold harmless district. We have the 4.82 mills on debt for both the Homestead and the non-Homestead. Non-Homestead is your commercial and industrial aspects, and the 18 mills on our non-Homestead property. We were not subject to any headly effect this year, so we get our full millage allowance. This is the L4029 that we're actually required to give to the cities in Wayne County and the state, showing what we're going to levy this year. The lights highlighted red are headly reduction. If our actual taxes increase greater than the rate of inflation, we actually roll back our taxes. And I don't know if Dearborn has done a headly override millage in a long time, but right now, not since really 2008, '09, we had to worry about this because that's when the economy really related to the real estate market. So we haven't seen it, but I've seen some districts are starting to get impacted by that. So that's something we have to watch going forward. We might have to do a millage override if we want to levy our full revenue on our tax side. And as you can see on the far right A and B, we have no taxes coming due to be renewed until 2024. So this is a pictorial of our foundation allowance. As you can see, it was increasing over many years until about the 2011 mark when we lost that 470, and we had to make a lot of adjustments back then. Slowly inching its way back, but we have still not reached the peak back in 2010. As another part of our funding is our student counts. As you can see, we actually in 2018, '19, we projected an increase in students, and we actually realized a reduction in students. And so 139 students, and that meant that it was mid-year that we found that out. So we didn't do a lot of staffing reductions at that time to kind of get our staffing back in line. So we went forward and continued the main staffing because we didn't want to do mid-year cuts. But as you can see, in 2019, '20, we have another reduction projected. So therefore, when we look at the adjustments in the budget this year, it's really a two-year impact on staffing to kind of bring us back into a line of our staffing ratios.
Tom?
Go ahead.
I'm having a hard time following the fall and spring numbers.
Yeah, so it's a 90-10 ratio. So the fall count is worth 90%, and the spring is only worth 10.
So are we saying that for the school year we're currently in, in the fall, we had 20,730 students, and in the spring, we had 20,011 students?
Correct.
And then we're thinking then that next fall, we're going to be back up to 20,619?
Correct. So you look, the fall to fall is the big change.
Why did we have such a drop in spring, and we're thinking it's going to bounce back up, not all the way, but mostly?
I'll leave that to my colleague Abe Misher that does a lot of work on this. He works with consultants and looks at the grade-to-grade articulation as they move up, look at birth rates, look at what we're realizing that are coming out of the district back in through international means. So there's a lot that goes into that discussion. I don't think I could do it justice to have tried to explain why the student counts are going up or down. But I can find out for you, and I can have maybe Abe reply back of his assumptions.
It just seems like a bump down in the spring, and then we're expecting a recovery again in the fall. Now, again, still lower numbers fall to fall, but a 700-student drop and then a 600-student recovery, I don't get that.
Okay.
Statistically, is there usually that much difference between the spring count and the fall count?
Yeah, it depends if you're a growing district. You could see the spring count come in, and Dearborn historically has been getting kids after the fall count increasing. And if you actually see a decreasing number, that's more alarming because normally we haven't seen that trend in the past.
Okay.
And so just to kind of go to the next slide, so this is a pictorial of our student counts over the years. So you can even see in the past, we've had some peaks and kind of lowers and continues to grind. So I don't know at this time, is our peak at the point where it's going to continue to raise after our current 2020 year, or is it going to remain flat? So it's an actual science to actually figure out what student count is, and it's a big impact for us. So I know Abe spends a lot of time on it to figure out what he thinks is his best guess.
And we get the studies too from companies.
Correct.
It's not just based on him. It's based on middle cities and Stanford, I believe. And then we've also had, Plan Moran has done it in the past for us as well.
Right. And the legislative aspect at the federal level has an impact on us also.
And I do believe that we see this bump a lot of times because we have a lot of students who start out at charter schools or alternative schools, stay there for the first, through the first count usually, and then their parents decide to switch them back to the public school system. We've had that happen traditionally. Every year, we see quite a bit of that movement going on.
It just, the numbers for this school year don't show that. They show the opposite.
Yeah.
Well...
We can check that with Abe, that number.
Right, right. And we'll get something to the board.
Trustee Barry.
Stu, ask, can you repeat the part about we didn't have any employee reduction last year and how we were able to accomplish that?
Right. So in 2018, '19, we expected roughly about 150-student increase. And so we staffed our model on that. And actually, you know, when the school starts, we've already had classes off-field, teachers assigned. So when the fall count happens, probably in November, we finally get it audited and finalized, and we actually had a student decrease. So we're not, we felt it was appropriate not to do staffing changes mid-year. That way, kids would have to get reassigned to a new teacher. We had a lot of one-time revenue we could use, so we kind of did use that revenue to kind of maintain us for the rest of the year, knowing that in 1920, we're going to have to make the reduction in staff for that reduction and the projected reduction for 1920.
So what I'm hearing you say, that revenue we used last year is not available this year?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make, put that out there. Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So as we go through the budget process, we have a best case, worst case, and a most likely scenario. As you see here on the most likely scenario is what we base our budget assumptions on going forward, that we're going to have a slight surplus at the end of this year, basically from the reserves we set aside for insurance, for property casualties, for tax abatements, things like that. We kind of set this reserves for. As we go throughout the year, we get a more finalized number, and though sometimes those reserves are higher, so we kind of roll that back. So that's why you'll see a slight surplus on our expectation for next year. On the student count, that's where the 138 come in, where we're actually going to go down a little bit. We don't do anything with the enhancement millage for any given year because it comes in and it goes out the same year into our fund balance. We use it the following year, so it really doesn't impact our general fund. It's in its own separate fund. You can see our health insurance is the cost of living adjustment that the state sends out is going up 1.9%. So we realize that in our hard cap costs. We have our salary increases, and we have our step increases. That's where we get back to where I mentioned before, that our contract negotiation has a 2% increase, along with some other adjustments, and our step increases for our staff moving up to the next step. But then we also see some retirements. So a lot of times, we use retirements to help offset the staff increase. Doesn't always work, you know, together all the time, but we're estimating about 50 retirements this year, and we're getting close to that number now. And we have our foundation increase. And then the addendum budget matrix, we'll go over a little bit later, but that kind of gives you the rest of the detail of the budget adjustments, that we're looking at trying to keep the budget basically even for next year at a roughly a $24,000 surplus at the end of the year. And again, these are all based on estimates. We know that no matter what we do, it's all going to change in a month, and we'll have to go through this whole process again of where our budget needs to be. So we look at the end of it, their fund balance will be roughly 13.7% of our operational cost. Now, just be aware that there's roughly 3.5% in there for our enhancement millage that we're banking every year. So our actual fund balance is closer to 10% based upon our operational expenditures. Now, one of the things that we haven't realized in the past due to a lot of uncertainty, the screen isn't really meant to read either screen, but the main effect is there's an $8 million swing between our worst case and our best case scenario. And we haven't realized that large of a spread because of the unknown to our state aid and the volatility of our student count from the last couple of years. So normally, we might see a $3 to $4 million range, but you know, with the uncertainty and the estimates we had to use, there's a larger swing between the two. That means that our budget could materially change next year, and we'll have to keep a close eye on that.
Did your most likely fall pretty much right in the middle of those two?
We made it fall in the middle.
Okay. You did, okay.
Yeah, because by that point, we were looking at the budget model, what number of staffs to cut, you know, where do we look at, you know, any kind of increases. We kind of made sure that at least we'd be in the middle. So if we actually did have a change, it wouldn't be one side greater or bigger to either adding or subtracting for the budget. Try to keep it in the middle. If we actually knew all the plans, at the time we do the budget, it might be much easier, but unfortunately, this time we don't.
It certainly would.
Yes.
So I see some retirements here, and, but do we have hires as well, or is that factored into the salary increase and...
There's no additional hires. We're actually looking at a staffing decrease this year with the idea that the retirements we have, that staff doesn't lose their job, they might just have to go into a different position than they were the year before. Doesn't always work so cleanly, but that's the general philosophical approach.
And there may, there may be like some specialized areas, like special ed and others, that we, you know, we don't have people that could take those positions, so they...
And we'll also continue to get retirements all through the summer, so hopefully, we'll have more retirements than we had, our surplusing of teachers in their current position that we'll still be hiring at some point also during the year.
It might be helpful to make the distinction between surplus and cuts.
Right. We're not doing any layoffs. We're surplusing teachers in their current position to be reassigned to a different position next year.
Thank you. Well, and that's not 100%, but that's the plan.
That's the philosophy of how we're focusing.
Until we really know where we're at.
Yeah, and which certifications are needed and things like that. So... But we do feel good that, you know, we're hoping that the plan has always been, unfortunately, the House plan came out, and it was worse news than what we expected. So, you know, we have to adjust.
Yeah, well, usually the House plan is more middle-of-the-road, but this year is actually way in the...
Yeah, a lot more drastic.
Yes. So just some of the things to highlight on this is where we track where the actual plans are. The worst case was the Senate proposal, and the best case was the governor's proposal. The foundation allowance doesn't tell the whole story. There's a lot of categoricals that also were adjusted that we'll talk in a second. Just, this shows you the dollar values for the student counts, and at the very bottom, it shows you our staffing costs for next year. And you can see where they're not exactly 2% because there's other things that are in the contract that modify compensation, so they could be slightly higher or lower. Kind of point out the DFIC is slightly higher because we had to have additional steps for special ed paras, for bus drivers, because those are some of the areas we were struggling to find. So that was part of the whole unit negotiations process. So on this one, this talks more of the categoricals and money. If you can see on the top right, the red highlighted area, that's a loss of the one-time revenue. So that's what we used last year to kind of help balance the budget from our non-staffing costs, but those go away this year. The next one in the middle is our risk funds. That's a big change. There's about a $3.5 million swing in what they're going to do with at-risk next year. The governor proposed a lot of additional money to the schools through at-risk, where the Senate kept to the same. So there's a big swing there, what could potentially happen on that. And since we're a hold harmless district, we don't get the full allocation of at-risk. We only get 30% of it. So the governor was going up to 50%, which is a big dollar value for us. So there's a lot of ambiguity in there that where that could actually fall into. And the next part is retirement, and this is where the state gives us money for our retirement plan as the costs continue to rise, and they address the unfunded liability aspect of it. And they're giving us roughly about $2.7 million in money. However, we don't see that money. It just turns around and goes back to the state to help pay off the retirement. So as someone mentioned, it's a whoosh. You know, you comes in and goes out before you can do anything with it. Now, that represents a 2% raise for staff. So the state will actually say they're giving you more money for education, but it's not useful. It's useful to us, but we don't actually realize any gains from it on an operational aspect. We don't get to put it towards supplies or staffing. It's basically to offset that cost that we might have gotten, depending on the actual assumptions in the state.
Tom, can you one more time go over that one time?
Right. So last year, we realized Wayne County made an error on their taxes. So we were able to catch that and say, you owe us another $1 million, roughly over $1 million. We couldn't realize it last year because the way accounting rules, to realize money, you have to get it within 60 days of the year end. We didn't get it till almost 120 days later. So we had to recognize it this year, not last year. So that was a boon to our budget for one year. The other is Wayne County gives us additional allocation from the Act 18 millage when they have a surplus in their fund balance, and they gave us a one-time payment to help offset transportation costs. So that was a cost that we didn't budget, and we were able to realize offset our operational costs. So that helped lower our...
The reason I'm having you repeat that is I'm fielding some phone calls. People saying, why don't you just do the same thing you did last year?
We don't control it, yeah.
You can't control that.
Right. Our taxes, as far as we know, are balanced. We haven't gone through the final audit yet. We haven't got our final distributions. And the Act 18 is totally, you know, on the Wayne Reese's side, whether they're going to do it or not.
Thank you.
We have no control over it.
Thank you.
And again, I won't go through all these, but again, even at year end, we still have to make a lot of adjustments as we go through the process. So this is where we're actually looking at staffing. If you look at the top under the three different scenarios, so we're looking at roughly 60 positions as a reduction in the budget for staffing positions. And these are pluses and minuses. So there's some positions that have higher and lower, so that's the net dollar value. And the transportation costs for special programs, if you remember at the May board meeting, you actually approved and increased in our training contract for our special education costs. So we had to realize that. And the other good thing is good for the instructional program, our early college for education is starting. So that's going to be an increase in costs, but it's good for students. So we look at our actual cost for our ending of the year and beginning of the year. As you can see in the red and green highlights, that's where our costs are changing. So last year, our costs actually went up a little bit at year end for this next coming year. When you look at it this year, our costs are actually going down slightly, which is good. Most school districts look between 80 to 85% to keep their staffing costs in, to make sure they're balanced and their staffing ratios are appropriate. We've been over that cost. So getting that number a little lower is healthy for the district to maintain its fund balance and be on a good solid ground of operating going forward. Otherwise, you have peaks and valleys. You take some money from fund balance next year, then you add it back. We're trying to make sure we maintain a consistent program versus having more staff, less staff, more staff, less staff as we go through the process. So this is just, the next couple of slides is showing the general fund. If you look at it, we have three components in our general fund. As it looks at, you have your general fund, our enhancement, our athletic. That's all considered general fund for state purposes. If you look at just the general fund, not the enhancement fund, you can see we're at 10.74% fund balance percentage of operational costs for next school year. Again, that takes out the enhancement costs that's actually adding to our fund balance percentage. And at the, next year, we're at 10.46%. So again, right where we, you know, having a 10% fund balance is good. A lot of people say it should be closer to 18%, but in today's times, it's unrealistic to have that much fund balance when, you know, we can still maintain at a lower level. The rating agency. So when we go for the bond, that'll be a question that I have to answer over and over again, of why we have a lower fund balance and what they recommend. This is just a quick snapshot of the special revenue funds. It's going to be changing a lot for the food service fund as we bring on SFE as our management company for next year. So we'll see a lot of changes in that with the focus on food quality and menu choices. So we'll see that change for next year. This is all the funds. You can see our capital projects, we're actually going down in our usage. We see roughly about 1.7% 7.7 million usage of our fund balance. Just again, that we don't have enough money to maintain the higher transfers to keep our infrastructure, but to keep the balanced budget and mostly working what's in the classroom, we have to reduce that slightly. So you'll see that, that that's the potential next discussion on the bond campaign or informational campaign will be a big issue. And my computer froze. And again, even in next year, we're also looking at a slightly, again, reduction in our capital project fund. So the key issues, obviously, the finalization of the school aid funding from the state's going to be a big issue for us. Continue to monitor out the closeout this year, and staffing for next year is a, is a big issue for us to kind of work on, and HR has a lot of work to do in that area. Long-term, obviously, the potential bond program. Short-term, funding of capacity issues as we look at maybe converting more classrooms as needed, and the management of the food service program. So those are the last big three things on the long-term side. And that's it. Longer than I normally do for a budget discussion.
Very well.
We let you talk. Unfortunately, we're still all confused.
Anytime. Again, this is just a discussion. We'll be actually approving the budget on the June 24th. So if you have questions on it, there might be some small tweaks as more things come aware, but feel free to contact me, and I'll gladly answer any questions.
Okay. Trustee Barry.
One question for you. How do you deliver so much bad news with a straight face?
I've done it for 26 years.
On a more serious note, I've never seen a budget with so many moving parts. So I really appreciate all the time that you put into this, and I know...
We have a very dynamic scope district.
I know our committee dug in a little deeper, the meeting earlier.
Yes, at the finance committee, we went a lot deeper into some of the staffing issues that this meeting is not the right venue.
Thank you very much for...
Yeah, we did sit down with the unions last week too to go through it all, so they're aware of it also. We're very transparent, and our model tracks what the changes are so everyone knows what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish. It is very transparent.
Thank you.
Trust, oh, okay. Who was first? Trustee Moses?
He was.
Trustee Thorpe?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we'll be approving the revised budget that we're assuming in two weeks.
Correct.
I don't have much hope that Lansing will have it figured out by then.
I don't either.
So it'll just be a stopgap until we really find out what their numbers are going to be, and then we'll be revising the budget probably late summer?
Yeah, usually you revise the budget when you have a major adjustment. Having our state aid actually come in is a major adjustment. So normally, we'd have waited till January, February to do the First Amendment. We might do it much earlier as we know more data.
Maybe October, somewhere around there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Trustee Moses?
Well, I think the biggest thing that we learned today obviously is the state and defunding of public education, and that's very unfortunate. I actually asked for information from Dr. Blakel as far as the state House representatives who sit on the appropriation committee for education and also for the full budget. I contacted a few, and I actually contacted the school board members who are in their district, and hopefully that they're joining the fight in talking to these representatives about meeting at least the governor halfway. So I urge all of the residents and my colleagues as well to join me in doing that kind of outreach work, and hopefully, we can get the state representatives to really first realize and understand that we're dead last, we're the dead last state in funding public education, and that needs to change. And it's very difficult, but it's, I know people are talking about the roads and the needs of, you know, funds to go there, but the public education is the backbone of society, and if we're not going to fund it right, we're really cheating our next generation. So thank you, Mr. Wall, for the presentation.
Trustee McVal.
Just to play off of what Trustee Moses said, if you know anyone that lives in a different district, because generally, if you call your representatives, if you're not in their district, they don't care what you have to say. But if you know people that live in maybe a deep-red district or somewhere where they may have some influence on it, it doesn't hurt to say, call your, call your representatives. We, this is an issue all of us parents and all of us educators and anyone that's involved in student learning or cares about student learning needs to get ahold of and voice our opinion.
Yeah. Trustee Lane?
There's been a massive tax shift over the last 30 to 40 years so that the middle class is bearing more and more, and the upper classes bear less and less. 30, 40 years ago, the taxes were much higher on the wealthiest people, and we've been sold a bill of goods, and there's been a huge shift. And the result for the vast majority of us has been that there's been decreasing public investment in public institutions. I just think again of our Henry Ford College motto, pro bono omnium. We're the majority of the people. We need to think about this, and we need to act on it, as Trustee Moses has urged people. I agree completely with that. So if we feel that that's wrong, we have to start acting on that, and the time is right now because we have elections upcoming in the next year or so.
Yeah, and I have to say, unfortunately, this appears to be a partisan game that's being played right now. The governor put out a budget that included some things that the Republican Party had objections to, and so now are using the school funding as one of their political tools, I suspect, in order to push their agenda ahead. We can't seem to get away from legislators who would prefer to do battle over political positions rather than what's in the best interest of their community members. And quite frankly, I think they're all well aware of what needs to be done, but they would rather play this cat-and-mouse game. would rather play this cat and mouse game with the funding than put the money where it really belongs and find other ways to fund those other necessities as well. So this is not going to be a battle. I think we're going to come out very favorably, but it might not be, hopefully, the worst-case, let's all keep our fingers crossed, case scenario in the end. And the governor is, got a big fight on her hands, and she doesn't unfortunately have the numbers on her side sitting in the legislature.